Do you have the window cracked, CBS? Do you have the window cracked?
He actually got out today.
Delighted of, uh...
I was getting the mail and he shot out the door. He got outside and he looked froze. He mentioned it was like a possum. I was like, oh my God, what do I do now? I just went over and picked him up.
Yes, yours.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Uh, we all stand and flag salute please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every due justice for all.
Okay, uh, maybe we do. Have a roll call, please.
Thank you.
Councilmember DePamphylis.
Here.
Councilmember Dill.
Here.
Councilmember Garrity.
Here.
Councilmember Johnston.
Here.
Councilmember McGuigan.
Here.
Councilmember Owen.
Here.
Council President Habercorn.
Present. Also present is Administrator Frost, City Clerk Keith, City Solicitor Smith, and City Engineer Snyder. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda for this meeting is posted in City Hall and on the city's website, summerspoint.gov.org. Pursuant to City Code A 266-8P and to afford everyone an opportunity to address the governing body, the public may speak only one time and not to exceed three minutes. I have to ask for a motion here to waive the forty-eight hour rule and add Resolution Number eighty-six to the agenda. This item is time-sensitive and needs attention prior to our next meeting. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Any comments? Not hearing any comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposed. Uh, Resolution Number eighty-six is added to the agenda. Communications, does anyone have any communications they would like to share? I have a communication I'd like to share. It's from the, uh, Green, uh, Green Thumb Garden Club. We are all very aware that the Philadelphia Eagles are champions. And now Summers Point has news of a future Eagle to share, a future Eagle Scout to be clear. A wonderful story is unfolding this week here in Summers Point. On Saturday, March first, local Boy Scout Jeffrey Lovett will be overseeing his workday towards earning the Eagle Scout Award. Jeffrey is a member of Troop Fifty-Five in Summers Point and has been steadily planning towards this day since last spring. Jeffrey has chosen to remove the eight existing three-foot-by-twelve-foot garden beds behind the Summers Mansion and replace them with two-foot-high raised beds of the same dimensions filled with fresh wood chips and eco soil. It also involves improving a wild thicket of trees facing Shore Road. Both involve many steps. Not only would the grounds behind Summers Mansion be improved, but it will enhance the chances of a groundful harvest for next spring. He has involved the Green Thumb Garden Club and Patriots of Summers Mansion from the beginning, and we are thankful he has chosen this project. We hope you can consider covering this project to share how the community has responded. If we are invited, you're all invited to come see for yourself anytime Saturdays from eight AM to four PM worktime. Or contact Rosemary Evans at six oh nine two one four six nine six seven. It's a great opportunity for a project where we have a young person working in the community and having other groups, uh, working along with them, such as the garden club and the mansion. So I think it's a great, uh, point for Summers Point. Anybody else have any communications? If not, move on to the administrators' report. Uh, Jason, anything to share?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening. Solicitors' report, Mr. Smith?
Uh, yes, please. Um, just want to draw council's attention to ordinance number six of twenty twenty-five. It's on for a first reading. Um, it is dealing with a, a, a request of Bayview Courts to refinance, uh, their property. They have, uh, asked us to amend the development plan and the development plan. Um, financing deals with the purchase and construction of a parking lot across the street that was being restricted, although it's not in the name of the, uh, Bayview Courts. It's another entity. Um, there's one point seven million dollars associated with costs relative to the construction or procurement of the structure of the parking lot and another two point three million relative to renovations or repair work on the main, uh, complex itself. There, there's a whole financing issue. The ordinance outlines it. The two, uh, the plan and the agreement outline that. I've asked, uh, council for Bayview Court to provide, give us a backup documentation concerning the financing for both the one point seven million dollar figure and the, uh, two point three million dollar figure. Um, and I just want to point out one thing. Connection with the, uh, Second Amendment. It's on page five. Just so everyone's aware, uh, the annual service charge is to be scored in Freddie Mac and, uh, the Cottier by the time I say this. That year's, so I just don't make sure I was aware of that. You can take a look at this if you'd some like to put it on the, uh, first reading passes. Um, the financing is, uh, required to be done by the end of this month for various reasons. Uh, so there is actually a, a, another, another council meeting because we're the, uh, dead council meeting where we have to get it. So I've advised council that before, uh, this goes on for a second reading, that I did want the financials so that if anyone asks, we have them and we review them. So, uh, just ask me that, uh, could you elect to pass this tonight? That if anyone has any questions, they can take their contact here, Jason, to discuss, uh, questions we have about the documents.
Thank you.
Uh, one other thing, I, there is a, uh, probably not a big deal, but it is a big deal. Uh, Resolution eighty-three, twenty twenty-five. This is to make, uh, Madam Clerk, her staff's life a lot easier. That's a, uh, they, we now are required to publish a newspaper in hard print. And there's, I don't know anyone who really gets the Atlantic City Press anymore in hard print. And I think he still gets mailed to you saying it's really not something there. We've had great difficulties in being able to post our legal, uh, notices. And this is just a resolution in support of, uh, having the current status where it is, uh, because of the Star Ledger going out hard print. We've had a period of time where you're allowed to just post via the internet. And this resolution supports, uh, having us be able to just put our legal notices on our website. And it's kind of, uh, I think it's, it's probably long overdue going in this direction. So I just point that out because it's not necessarily the cost of legal notices. It's having our staff, having to juggle our, our schedules to get things done on certain dates so that we can meet deadlines for placing the legal notice on with a newspaper. That, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Second one may be more important than the first.
In one word, right? This is our world. Mr. Snyder?
I just have two items. The first is, uh, regarding Route Nine and the Great Bay Tunnel project. I spoke to the engineer today and, uh, also the water company. And right now, weather depending, they're anticipating opening the road. The, uh, March ninth is the, the date, right around there. So that's, I just wanted to give everybody a heads up of that. Um, New Jersey Avenue, uh, I was hoping to have that out to bid already, but we're still waiting for the state to review the plans to give us the go-ahead. Technically, they have thirty days, which is almost, but usually they only take a week or two. I don't know if they're backed up, but that's the delay in that. Yeah.
Anything else?
That's it.
Do we have any committee reports?
Council President?
Yes, Ms. Owen?
Um, just the, uh, from the Arts Commission, just the, uh, an announcement. Um, registration is now open for the Arts Commission, uh, Grown Up in May series with an abstract watercolor collage project for children ages six through ten, accompanied by an adult. There are three dates to choose from, March fifteenth, March twenty-second, or March twenty-ninth. The class is only ten dollars. For more information, check out the Summers Point Arts Commission website or on Facebook. The Arts Commission continues to work on their two thousand twenty-five programming with upcoming poetry, calligraphy, vision board, creative storytelling, and recycled art workshops.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. Any other committee reports?
Yeah, Council President, uh, the planning board met on February nineteenth. And the, uh, Salt House Project, the Paddle Club, and the Bass Harbor Boat Yard were approved by the, uh, planning board. And, uh, the Defoe Plaza, uh, presentation was partially completed, but, uh, we, it was a long meeting. We ran out of time. It was like five minutes to twelve. So we, uh, decided to, uh, move it forward to the final part of the presentation to March nineteenth. And, uh, it was, uh, a very interesting, uh, all, all four were very interesting projects. And I think they're, uh, going to end up being an asset to the, uh, to the city. Thank you.
Any other committee reports?
Yeah, Council President, um, I attended the school board meeting. Uh, again, they had their, uh, Student of the Month awards for January, which is always fun to watch. Um, they also did their, uh, school safety data system presentation, uh, reporting on any violence or any incidents that are happening in the schools. Um, the numbers are definitely down significantly, which is a good thing. Uh, they've done a lot of training for staff and, uh, it looks like they're really on top of everything there. Uh, they also did the annual, uh, audit presentation for twenty-three to twenty-four. Um, there were no, there were six minor recommendations with those corrections have already been made. There were no discrepancies or anything in their audit. It was a clean audit. And, uh, that's always a good thing, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other committee reports?
Mr. President, uh, EDAC met last night, and it was brought to our attention by someone in the audience that, uh, the website still lists us as meeting at the Gateway Theater. Uh, so that needs to be updated. And also looking at it, uh, I think we have Bill Dunphy's name spelled wrong on there. So if, if it's spelled wrong on economic development, I believe he's also on the Historic Commission. So you may want to review that. And other than that, uh, EDAC is moving forward with what, uh, they were instructed to do. Uh, they're looking, they're following the master plan for the future. They've picked, uh, a project here in town to focus on, which is the gas station on Route Nine and five fifty-nine. They'd be brought up to speed, contact the owner, contact the environmental company, get as much information to see if there's anything that can be done to, uh, move that along. And they also formed a tourism committee, uh, of which was discussed last night on, uh, and Rob's actually the, the forerunner on this, that, uh, the garvie races want to come back to Summers Point. So they may need a little assistance. So I would recommend to them that they come to one of our meetings. We find out what exactly they need and then bring it to council too.
Right.
And that's all.
Any other?
I'm sorry, I forgot one thing.
That's okay.
Uh, last night I, uh, attended a networking session for, uh, Sustainable New Jersey, talking about grants and solar programs and environmental programs. Uh, a lot of good information that, uh, it was all for schools and for municipalities. Um, our schools are already doing a lot of this, but there is some new stuff and some new rules that I will pass on to them. And, uh, Mr. Hobig was there. I'm sure he'll pass on any new thing we could use for the municipality, so.
That's great. Great to see groups working together to get things done, so. Any other? I have one. It's, uh, partly not a, uh, committee report, but it is in reference to a bus trip. Uh, when we did meet with the Recreation Committee about a year ago, some of the seniors brought forward that they wanted to see us bring back bus trips. Uh, there is a bus trip scheduled for May eighth. It's to the Dutch Apple Dinner Theater. It's Fiddler on a Roof. Uh, there is information on the Short Starts Here Facebook website as well as information right up here, um, with the agendas. And there is information on the door coming in. So anybody looking to attend that, please reach out. Ashley Mathers is, uh, in the, uh, that's in the Finance Department will answer your questions. So that's something coming up also. All right, moving on from the committee reports. I really appreciate the committee reports because I think they're very meaningful. It's, uh, it fills in not just city council on what's going on in different groups, but it is an avenue for the public that's attending or listening online to hear some of the things that are going on. So I appreciate those reports. Moving on, regular meeting minutes for February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and executive session meeting minutes for, uh, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We need them approved as to content. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Not hearing any comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposed. The minutes are approved. Moving on to the ordinances. Ordinance number four, please.
Ordinance number four of twenty twenty-five, an ordinance repealing section one fourteen dash one forty-six H five of Article twenty-two of Chapter one fourteen of the Code of the City of Summers Point.
May I have a motion to open to the public for comments on this ordinance alone?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposed. We are now open for public comments on ordinance number four of two thousand and twenty-five only. May I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposed. May I have a, a motion to adopt this ordinance, please?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposed. Ordinance number four is adopted. Ordinance number five, please.
Ordinance number five of twenty twenty-five, calendar year twenty twenty-five, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Since this is the first reading, um, may I have a motion to introduce ordinance number five?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Not hearing any comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposed. Ordinance number five is introduced. Ordinance number six.
Ordinance number six of twenty twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of the Second Amendment to a long-term tax exemption and capital contribution agreement between Bayview Court Urban Renewal LLC and the City of Summers Point dated May third, twenty sixteen, and the Fifth Amendment to the redevelopment agreement between Bayview Court Urban Renewal LLC and the City of Summers Point dated May third, twenty sixteen.
Since this is the first reading of this ordinance, may I have a motion to introduce?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Not hearing any comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposed. Ordinance number six is introduced. I'm now going to ask our CFO, Shayna Gestrel, to please come up to the, uh, microphone or to the podium. And she's going to discuss a little bit about our two thousand and five budget that will be later introduced via resolutions.
Two thousand and twenty-five.
Two thousand and twenty-five?
Yeah, he said oh-five.
Oh, I'm sorry. Two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I thought it was a time warp there for a minute.
Good thing. Uh, we are introducing the two thousand and twenty-five budget tonight with just under a two-cent increase or a local tax rate of one point one four. This is up one point seven six percent from two thousand and twenty-four. We saw an eight million dollar increase in our assessed valuation and anticipate that number to grow as we continue with future development. Considering the increases in our fixed costs or the costs that are beyond, beyond the city's control, such as health benefits, pensions, contractual salaries, and general liability insurance, we feel we have done our best to be conservative throughout this budget process. We used three point four million in surplus this year versus last year's two point eight million. A couple of line items impacting our anticipated revenues this year are the loss of approximately one hundred thousand in state aid as the two-year municipal relief fund program ended in two thousand and twenty-four. And although our investments did well last year, in, interest rates have started to go down and we may not see as good of results in two thousand and twenty-five. We did receive a generous donation of a hundred thousand dollars in addition to the mandatory bed tax contribution from Shore Medical Center. However, there is no guarantee we will receive these funds for next year's budget and will need to plan accordingly. Our debt service remains stable and we plan to introduce our annual bond ordinances around the time of the budget adoption. The public hearing is scheduled for March twenty-seventh at seven PM here in council chambers. You will be able to comment on the budget at that time. A copy of the introduced budget will be posted to our website, summerspoint.gov.org by the end of the day tomorrow for your review. Thank you all for your time this evening.
I want to thank you, Shayna, uh, Shayna, for your, uh, leadership during this process. You have very, uh, much kept us on task. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Okay, um, the next, uh, thing here on the agenda, I, I need a motion and a second to open, uh, to the public for resolutions only at this time. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposed. If you would like the public to, uh, please come up to the podium if you want to speak, state your name. And this is on resolutions only. Thank you.
Motion to close the public portion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposed. Resolutions open to the public for comment is now closed. Number seventy-seven, please.
Resolution number seventy-seven of two thousand and twenty-five, introduction of two thousand and twenty-five municipal budget.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Not hearing any comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposed. Resolution number seventy-seven is approved. Number seventy-eight. Now, before, uh, Madam Clerk reads it, there's three, I believe there's now three executive sessions on here. Number seventy-eight, number seventy-nine, and number eighty-six. We will go into executive session after the business part of the, uh, meeting is done. Everybody is welcome to wait in the lobby while we're in executive session. And then once we come out, I do not believe we'll be taking any action when we come out of executive session, but you're more than willing to, to wait outside. Number seventy-eight, please.
Resolution number seventy-eight of two thousand and twenty-five, authorizing executive session, advice of counsel and attorney-client privilege communication regarding the status of contractual negotiations between the PBA, Patrol and Dispatch, and the City of Summers Point.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Not hearing any comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposed. Resolution number seventy-eight is approved. Number seventy-nine, please.
Resolution number seventy-nine of two thousand and twenty-five, authorizing executive session, advice of counsel and attorney-client privilege communication regarding the status of contractual negotiations between the City of Summers Point and the City of Ocean City regarding a shared facilities service agreement for municipal court matters.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Not hearing any comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposed. Resolution number seventy-nine is approved. Number eighty, please.
Resolution number eighty of two thousand and twenty-five, authorizing RFPs for Marina operations.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Not hearing any comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposed. Resolution number eighty is approved. Number eighty-one, please.
Resolution number eighty-one of two thousand and twenty-five, amending the authorization of purchase through the use of state contract vendor Xerox Corporation pursuant to NJSA forty A colon eleven dash twelve A and NJAC five colon thirty-four dash seven point two nine C for the Summers Point Clerk and Construction Offices.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Not hearing any comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposed. Resolution number eighty-one is approved. Number eighty-six, please.
Resolution number eighty-six of two thousand and twenty-five, authorizing executive session, advice of counsel and attorney-client privilege communication regarding the status of issues concerning a cybersecurity claim involving the City of Summers Point.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Not hearing any comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposed. Resolution number eighty-six is approved. Okay, now we go over here. We have, uh, one, two, three, four items on a consent agenda tonight. Uh, may I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second? Got the second. Any comments? Not hearing any comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposed. The consent agenda is approved. Some old business. Uh, Mr. Snyder, um, this is in relation to the municipal approval statement for the NJ DOT regarding review of the proposed additional bus stops requested by residents[1542.51] review of the proposed additional bus stops requested by residents along U.S. Route Nine New Road. I know you did reach out and did get a reply.
I did reach out, and I was just inquiring and stating some of the concerns city council had for the stops, which were front of the Groveland Cleaners, across from Wells Fargo, and then across, not across from, it's the car rental, yeah, Enterprise, yep. Just stating some of the concerns that we want to discuss, and they kind of took that as the city's not interested, and they just said they don't want to do it anymore.
So based on the question, that was dropped, so we move on, I guess.
I didn't mean to officially have that as the city's position. I, it was more of a, you know, investigating, asking questions, and they just kind of said they don't want to do it.
There was a consensus there.
Yeah, it came back.
They had the same.
Pretty clear from them, so. I was surprised a little bit, but I wanted to make sure I read that right. That's why I wanted you to address it. Does anyone have any other old business to discuss? Okay, if we don't have any other old business, how about new business? We have two social affair permit applications on, two actually, for the American Legion, one on the Fourth of May and the other one on the Second of November. And then we have one for the VFW Post for an event on three twenty-one, and I'm gathering that all the information is here and approved by this. Okay, so with that all okayed, can I just get a few nods in the head here to make sure everybody's good with this?
Yeah, we're good.
I think everybody's good with those. Okay. All right, next, I guess does anyone else have any new business they want to talk about? All right, not hearing any new business. I'll go to Mr. Frost here to talk about discussion of the bill, please.
Sure. This evening, we have a bill listing the amount of one million, six hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents, as well as a record payment of six hundred and fifty dollars.
Any questions for Mr. Frost? Not hearing any questions. Need a motion to open up for the public portion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and opposed? Nobody opposed? Okay, so we're now open for public session. Anybody that wants to address city council, please come up to the microphone and state your name. Again, we're into, we use the three-minute rule so that everybody may speak.
Patricia Pearson, five eight seven, Mark's Road. We'll talk about the budget in March, but you should do better. You might think one point eight cents is not very much. However, we're higher than Ocean City, higher than Lowport. Everybody in every store in this town is telling me how bad the taxes are, and I expect them to be no taxes, no increase this year. And that's that. Now, let's get down to the real story. Tax revenue, not tax revenue, revenue. And how are we going to get some to make the taxes go down? And guess what? Everybody in this town is asking me, what about the boat ramp? How much are you going to charge? Who's going to take it? I don't know about this stuff anymore, and, but I have to hear it today, today, in the diner. Pat, what's going on with the boat ramp? I went to City Hall. I asked them, can I pay for the summer? They have no idea. They don't have any clue what's going on. You tell me.
It will be on the agenda, the boat ramps at our next city council meeting.
What will it be?
There will be a discussion on the boat ramps and the fees for our next meeting on March thirteenth.
Okay, so on March thirteenth, fishermen and people that want to park their boats know that March thirteenth, there's going to be a discussion. So when can they go and find out what they have? You know that people, fishing season's on right now, starting this weekend or something. I don't know about this stuff, but I hear about it every day. Not individual, many. All right, well, what about the rest of the people?
They can call me, too.
Okay, and what, that's not an answer, Tom, and you know it. That's just pushing the people off. It's pushing the people off. You're supposed to. Well, tell me. I'll call you. When do you want me to call you? I will. I'll call you tomorrow. Deal. Anyhow, please look at it, please look at it, and please look at keeping those tax, you know what to do, keeping those taxes level. You know what to do. You did it before. The bottom line is, and you know, too, Sean, you're just playing. So the bottom line is, put the.
I don't sit up here and play.
Well, okay, you're not.
I don't sit up here and play.
You're not playing.
Please don't say that.
Okay, I apologize for that.
You don't need a pause.
I apologize. I know, I apologize.
This is a very serious situation for me.
Anyhow, that's it.
Thank you very much for your comment. Not seeing, come on up.
You come in late, I don't know all of it talked about, but I did attend.
May I have your name, please?
Christine, that's all I'd like to go by.
Okay. Full name and, and.
I don't think I have to. I live in Summers Point along the bike path.
Your last name, please.
I don't have to. Anyway, the EDAC meeting went over some things, you know, and I, I sent council, Janice, I didn't know you were there. I can send it tomorrow. I think I forgot you. An email. First off, transparency, even about meetings, is really kind of like we're in the dark. You got to plug in each commission, and half the time, it's not there, the agenda's not there. I mentioned it. I asked for calendar Monday. Everything was on there, not, actually, not everything. There was a few things missing. The EDAC meeting was not on there, which I mentioned, you know, so a little bit more transparent, just on your meetings, let alone what's going on. I think I already made it clear when I heard outrageously in the newspaper about more benches on the bike path. Whose idea was that?
That's my idea.
Was your idea?
Yes, ma'am.
We have benches on the bike path. Do you live over there?
I do.
On the bike path?
I do not live on the bike path.
Do you walk out?
Yes, I do, quite often.
Do you not see them?
Yes, I do.
So we don't need more. And we don't need workout stations.
That's certainly a subjective opinion, isn't it? That would be an opinion, right? Your opinion is we don't need.
It is my opinion. We don't need more benches.
Okay, well, my.
Because I know what I see on some of these benches going on, and I see what's left behind, and it's problems. There's just more, more benches, more problems. And a workout station, you want to throw money at something so crazy that would make it dangerous for who's going to use them. It's going to become a wild scene, and I don't want to look at that outside of my house. It's just totally inappropriate to think that we should have to put up with that. There's gyms all in, a bunch of gyms in this town you can walk to. If you live near the bike path, there's one right at the Acme. I'm not sure if Shopright One is still open, Snap. It's just an outrageous idea that you would even think to do that in front of people's homes. That's the usual response, just stare, look at people.
You want me to respond to that? Certainly, the benefit.
That's my response. There is no benefit to that.
You want to ask, you want me to respond or not?
Well, let me finish the rest of my comment about it. And to throw quarter million dollars at it when we got streets that looked like hell, they looked impoverished when you come up on Shore Road both ends. They're filthy, they've got huge potholes. I mean, that's where a quarter of a million dollars should be thrown at. It doesn't matter that it's a county. You have a right to protect this town, and you have a job, I think, to protect this town and have the county take care of it.
We have a three-minute rule, and you've gone over the three-minute rule?
I didn't know there was a three-minute rule.
Yes, it was.
Make that transparent.
It was announced at the beginning of the meeting.
I would have made sure I was three minutes.
It was, it was announced. Thank you very much.
Can I have an answer, then?
Sure, I'll respond to your, you know, the benefits of, of exercise and being outside is very well-known. The social aspects of that bike path is very well-known. That's, that's a jewel in this community, and the enhancements we have made over the years to that, I'm very proud of them. And as we continue to make these enhancements, I'll continue to be proud of them. Now, I'm not sure where you're quoting this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is from, but much of that, much of, excuse me, much of that, those enhancements have been made through the use of grants that, that our city engineer has aggressively gone after and secured for this community. So again, I'm very proud of that bike path, and I'm looking forward to any other enhancements that we may make there, whether they're benches for people to gather on and interact socially, or whether they're some of these exercise stations, which will improve not only their